All right. Good evening, everybody. We're gonna go ahead and get this listening session started. It is 6:02 PM, and my name's Charles Grimm. I'm a newly-elected Pasco City Council member, and also I am accompanied here by Leo Peralis, also a newly-elected council member. And so we are here to learn. We are here to listen and really take this back to the council as a whole. We have members of staff here. Our interim director, Sarah. We have our economic development director, Mr. Gonzalez, and also our deputy city manager, Richa, is here. So if there's a possibility of answering a question or providing some more background, we would love to, but some of this, we are just here to listen and take back to the group at large. And you know, I don't even know that this is gonna be the end of it tonight. We'll probably do this again to really try to learn and understand, you know, what really happened before at least our time on the council here. So with that, I believe interim director Sarah is going to make a presentation, and then we're just gonna open it up, you guys. We haven't even really set a time limit for comments or anything like that. We're just, we are, we're both just checked in to listen. So just for, maybe for the sake of everybody else, you know, be succinct as possible, but we have no obligations other than to listen to you tonight. So, thank you.
Okay, we're gonna get started with our presentation. Many of you have already seen this presentation. We're going over the same information, very similar information to what was presented in prior council meetings. Let's see if I can make it work. And to get started, we wanted to give some context on what does our comprehensive plan says about water rights. And for that, Director Gonzalez will walk us through that.
Thank you, and good evening, council and members of the public. Wanted to start again with sort of a basic overview of some of the various goals and policies that are from the Pasco adopted comprehensive plan, which was adopted in June of 2021. The comprehensive plan is a state-mandated growth management document with several required elements, including capital facilities and utilities. On the slide before you, we wanted to highlight three separate references to the water rights discussion, and those being in the capital facilities element. Goal number four is to acquire adequate water rights for future needs. At the time of the development of the Pasco comprehensive plan, there was an expected growth of roughly 45,000 residents or so by the year 2038. That since has been increased, as we know. And so the intent was to ensure that there was an acquisition of water rights to accommodate that growth. The capital facilities policy 4A indicates that the city shall ensure the acquisition of water rights commensurate with the city's planned development and need for water in the residential, commercial, industrial, and other urban uses. And further on, a policy 4B for capital facilities is to ensure that new developments utilizing the city water transfer to the city any existing water rights associated with the properties being developed. In absence of any existing water rights, the development shall pay for the acquisition fees to the city. And then lastly, for the utilities element, goal number one states that the city shall provide adequate utility services to the urban growth area to assure that the anticipated 20-year growth is accommodated with the necessary infrastructure. And under the utilities element, policy 1A is to ensure that the public water and sewer services are available concurrently with the development in the urban growth area. So these are several of the, these are a few of the many goals and policies out of the adopted comprehensive plan. These specific goals and policies are with direct reference to the water rights discussion. So that'll pass it on to Director Sarah.
Thank you. With that, we're gonna now oversee the types of water rights the city of Pasco has. And as you likely have seen before, city of Pasco manages potable water rights, which are surface withdrawal rights, irrigation water rights, which are a combination of surface and well withdrawal rights, including Faboet 14 rights, which really denotes a certain region within city of Pasco, and actually Franklin County. And finally, PWRF irrigation water, which is related to the industrial facility the city owns and operates north of city limits. So diving deeper into each of those kinds, water rights for municipal, as it's shown here, and I must say, this is really intended to focus on potable rights. Those allow for draw from the Columbia River. We currently have available 18,883 acre-feet per year, and the usage in 2022 was 15,873. We know 2023 numbers preliminary that demand has increased. So we're in the order of 16.6 for 2023. Now, this number, 18,883, includes the two lease amounts from Department of Ecology. And in the next slide, I will show you basically how we are accounting for those rights and how we look at our usage. So right here, what you're seeing in blue are those ecology leased water rights, and then the remainder of the municipal potable water rights with their own certificate numbers, and then usage. Similarly, on the irrigation side of things, those water rights are a combination, as we said, groundwater and withdrawal from the Columbia River. There's available around 8,660 acre-feet. These numbers are from 2022. Some of those rights have been transferred to be, to be able to be used without limits in which location that draw is happening from well. So there's been some adjustments to that available number, but it's not significant. And you're seeing the breakdown between what is groundwater, what is Columbia River water, and what is Faboet 14s, and then usage in 2022, 10,498 acre-feet. Did I say 98? 10,490 acre-feet, which now, no, for 2023, is in the order of 11,000. So a little increase in there as well. And again, this is the way we are tracking the use of those water rights, which water rights we have. This is just a spreadsheet, and so ultimately where we wanna get is to look at what amount of water rights is being used of what we have available and how much is remaining. So these numbers are, again, 2022 numbers that have been vetted. And here, what we're seeing is between municipal and irrigation. Municipal, so potable, has a surplus, a small surplus in 2022. Irrigation is slightly over, and between the two, the ultimate remaining balance is 1,180 acre-feet. And this number will come back when we do some calculations of what can be served, how many year use or equivalent residential units can be served with this number. But for now, we're trying to walk in order in our presentation. Okay, finally, we'll talk about PWRF for industrial wastewater facility or irrigation water for the land treatment system. Again, this is separate from anything within city limits, but this is just showing you what is the portfolio for city of Pasco. Again, this ones do not interact with the other water rights at this time. And again, we track those similarly to the previous sets. Okay, and now we can dive a little bit deeper on where those water rights needs and regulations are specified in our Pasco municipal code, the PMC. And so there's two sections in two different chapters where those are mentioned, and it has to do with water and sewer service, and it has to do with subdivision of land. And in addition to that, there is also the need to determine market value for the payment in lieu of transferring those water rights. And so this is within the responsibilities of the city engineer. So historically, we've seen that developers prefer to pay in lieu of transferring those water rights, and that is for those cases where developers have land that has water rights. Those existing rights in the land were typically being transferred out of that land prior to development, which then deemed the land having no water rights available to be transferred, therefore triggering that payment in lieu. Additionally, those water rights that were being removed from the land prior to development were being sold at market rate, and existing rights were either, as I said, sold or banked in a different location for later transfer or sale. Okay, in November of 2023, city council approved changes to that PMC via an ordinance, and those changes became effective in December of 2023. And those had to do with both transfer of potable and irrigation water rights. Though the need to transfer potable and irrigation rights applies to commercial developments, such as industrial users, processors, schools, and residential, right? And instead of mentioning the extension of water lines as a triggering factor for that transfer is really the water usage or water need, the demand. These adopted PMC changes apply to properties within city limits and beyond city limits within UGA, and the changes included an increase to the market rate, so that payment in lieu was now established at $4,150 per acre-foot. This increase in rate encourages the transfer of water rights. And then for those properties which rights were removed within the last 10 years from the time of development, a surcharge is established at 50%. And what this does is accounts for future value increases in that water right and incentive, and encourages, again, it's an incentive to transfer the water rights instead of paying an in lieu fee. We will discuss what communications have taken place. And so these, these are communications that happened regarding the changes to the PMC, proposed changes at that time. In October of 2023, there were a council workshop, a developer meeting, followed by a regular council meeting in late November. There were handouts developed, and we're seeing a little snippet of one of those handouts. Handouts were developed and distributed in late December. We reached out to the developers that we had contacts for. We made this documentation available online in the city website. We use social media. We made this information available in city hall in locations where people typically would do transactions. Additionally, there were social media posts, as I mentioned, and radio interviews to, to let people know of the change, also allow for comment in upcoming meetings. There was a council meeting in January 8th where comment was received and was encouraged. And then more recently, we've done outreach regarding this meeting, including, again, website, online information, social media, radio interview on Monday. So plenty, plenty of outreach has occurred. And so if we wanna look again at how water rights fees are assessed based on the PMC, here's how it works. So in lieu fees are required when a development is to occur, and there are no water rights to be transferred to the city. That in lieu fee is established at market value and effective since December of 2023 at $4,150 per acre-foot. Now, irrigation water is calculated for each development based on 50% of the site, and this is specific to residential, 50% of the site at 3.5 acre-foot demand per year per acre, right? This is what we have established as an average of demand for irrigation needs. And this is considering a site where there is likely a house to be built. Half of that site would be landscaped and irrigated. And then for potable water, the estimation is, and it's established in the PMC, so then is applied, is .3 acre-feet per residential unit. And on top of this, there is a very small transfer fee, which is ecology fee to allow for the transfer to occur. Okay, I can walk you through the math here so that it's, it's a little bit clear how, how that fee is assessed specifically for residential. So say we had an acre site, one acre site where four units are to be developed. So each, we're assuming that there is no loss to write away or any other things for the simplicity of the calculation. So we're talking about four parcels. There are quarter-acre lots. So irrigation needs is calculated at that quarter acre times 50% times the 3.5 acre-feet per each acre, which in this case is .25, right? And so this, the demand, the need for water rights is .4375 acre-feet per unit. So we're gonna make this calculation per each unit. Now, potable, we already established that is .3 acre-feet per unit. So now adding the two needs, each unit is, each unit requires a total of .7375 acre-units. And now if we multiply that by the four sites that we have in this one acre, we arrive to a total of water rights needed to be transferred or paid in lieu if transfer is not available of 2.95 acre-feet. And now, if we look at what is the cost for that in lieu fee should water rights not be transferred, we are looking at $12,242.50. Okay, similarly, if we were to compare different calculations, we've done the same calculation for, say, 11 units per acre, which is more in line with the increase in density we are seeing. So in here, what you're seeing is the 11 units per acre have more demand on the potable side, right? There's more potable, the units needing, needing that .3, and then smaller irrigation. So there is, it's not one-to-one, that, that change is not. When you have 11 acres, sorry, 11 lots in one acre, you can't use the math that was prepared for the four acres, right? So now, going back to the number we had seen in red earlier, and understanding what the need for these different types of development. So with 1,180 acre-feet left available for the city, if all development were to occur in quarter-acre units, we would be able to serve 1,600 units. Now, if development instead were to all be, for example, 11 units per acre, then we would be able to serve 2,500 units, and I'm rounding. So it's 2,545 units with that remaining available water rights. And again, those numbers are 2022 available water rights. We now know we're closer to having reached the limit of our water rights. So understanding that what our available water rights remaining to serve development, should we not receive any transfer of water rights, is, as you see, in 11 units per acre at 2,500, we are showing you also at the bottom of the screen what is the number of units we anticipate needing in the next 20 years. And that number is 23,000 units. Again, I'm rounding, 23,318 units. So there is a big delta between water rights available and water rights needed or units that can be served. Okay, if we transfer those number of units into acre-feet needed, and again, I'm using the 11 units per acre density just because that's the tendency, the trend we're seeing in development, we would be looking at 10,794 acre-feet. That's what is needed in order to support development in the next 20 years. Okay, so with this math having done, and trying to walk you through how the math is done in detail, we also wanted to show you what is the impact to development in, in a per-unit detail. So what we are seeing is four units per acre require a payment of $1,794. And then if it was four units per acre, that number is $1,115 per unit. And then the total increase we are seeing is in the order of 2,425 per acre-foot, right? That is, that is the increase between the 1725 fee that we had before and the new fee at 4150. And so this, what you're seeing right there under the developer subtitle has to do with what is the increase based on the new fee for each of those units? That is the impact to the single unit in your development. And then if we were to not require the increased payment or increased fee, the impact to the remainder of the customer base, so the, the whole group of ratepayers receiving service from the city on water would have to pay for the need to acquire water rights. And so that translates back to $4 per month increase for each million-dollar spend to purchase water rights, right? This is, and, and it's assuming that this expenditure is being bonded, so there is some level of interest, you know, built into our calculation. So as an example, a recent offer that we had was for some water rights in the order of 2,100 acre-feet. The negotiated value was 3,850 acre-foot, which results in $8 million, $8.3 million. So you can see how that purchase could have had, what kind of impact it would have had in the whole group of ratepayers paying for water, not just those that are creating the new demand. And with that, we've finished our presentation. I hope I didn't walk you through it too fast. We're happy to, to address any simple questions on this.
Thank you, interim director Sarah. You know, at this time, we're just gonna open up the floor again, you know? If you have comments, I mean, we, we are, we are here to listen. Maybe, you know, I don't know, just looking at the size of the room and, and the clock, we're, we're here to listen, but maybe a little closer to five minutes? If you have more of a formal presentation, take longer than that. Take 10 minutes or whatever, you know, you think. We are here to listen. What I've heard from you and visiting with some of you and from the city is we can all agree that the city needs water to grow. That is important. And then the, the city needs the, the developers, and developers need the city. The developers need a thriving city to invest in, to make money. And at the same point, you know, the city needs developers to help build the city. So we do need each other, but we also need water to do all this. So, you know, with that said, I appreciate staff being here. And, you know, if there's questions that they can answer, you know, we're happy to do so. And, but a lot of this is just taking back so we can just cogitate on this some more and visit with other council members and, you know, see if we can, you know, just, just figure this out. So that's what we're looking for, you know? You know, state your name. You're a stakeholder, you know? Give us your vestment in this, just so we know the perspective you're coming from, whether you're developer or farming, so we can really just try to understand this the best we can. So, Councilman Peralis, do you have anything before we?
I mean, I have questions of my own still, with, I would still like to get answered. I guess, I'll go ahead and start it off. I, I still just don't understand why we're doing a 50% surcharge. Maybe individuals nine years ago, eight years ago, didn't know we were gonna do this. So I really just feel like that's punitive, and I just really haven't, I have not been moved by any answers I've heard. That, and I, I still feel like we need to evaluate the numbers and the water available. We have individuals who are willing to lease to us, sell to us. We still have that gap. You know, I, I feel like there's a happy medium. We just haven't gotten there yet. So I, I'll go ahead and open that up with, I just don't get why we're doing a 50% surcharge, which equals about $6,000 bucks per acre-foot. And I'll start with that question, then also, I mean, for the example, that would make sense if we're built 2,500 units in a year. Have we ever built 2,500 units in a year in Pasco? No. So, I don't know, I, I, again, I, I just, I understand that we're trying to put away money for the future, but I mean, if we're not even touching 2,500, I think the last numbers I saw, we were barely doing like 230, 240. I, I don't know how you calculate apartments and things like that, but the numbers I saw from the Home Builders Association, I mean, we were barely at 240 homes a year. I mean, housing's not, has not increased that much to the point where I believe we're in dire straits for water. It's still an issue we need to look at. That's just my perspective on it. But again, I just, I just have not seen an answer yet as to why we need to have 50% surcharge. So if you could answer and enlighten us.
Councilmember Peralis, the, the 50% surcharge at, at the time when we had discussion in 2003, uh, 23 was a, a surcharge that the city has traditionally used for some of the other utilities, especially when you're looking at services outside of the city limits. So I believe that is a surcharge that was utilized. There was discussion on what exactly that surcharge should be. We ended at 50%. However, definitely up to council on setting that policy and what that should be. The idea behind a surcharge or any surcharge is this idea that water rights over the next decade will be increasing in price. And so as we're collecting the funds and holding on to it, because it is a restricted fund that the city cannot utilize for any other purposes. And so you're holding on to these funds, and as you're getting to that point of being able to purchase water rights, it's very likely that those prices that we are estimating at this time will be increased at that point. But definitely, a, a, a surcharge that can be discussed and revised as per council's direction.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, that's why I like talking, you know, talking about these things, 'cause I just feel like if someone's gonna develop a piece of property out there, I mean, the developer's having conversations with the city. That's when you'd probably have the conversation about water. Are you gonna do pay the in lieu fee? We encourage you to transfer to us. That's why I almost feel like the surcharge is not really needed, other than if someone wants to not develop and wait and sell their rights, you know, I, I get it. So the water rights as a, I look at it almost as like a stock. I mean, that's right, 'cause you can sell on the market for a little bit more. I think that's a conversation we need to have with individuals who own it. But at the same time, I don't like telling people to do with their property and their money. So that's why I say we need to kind of figure out, to me, that's like the biggest issue that I've, I've noted along with zero-scaping, you know? I want to, you know, we need to talk about water conservation, which we haven't even really talked about. You know, it's troubling to see that we use a lot of water, potable water for irrigation, you know? And we've talked about it, but that needs to be addressed. That's water that could be used for, for homes. So, you know, there's a, it's a multitude, multitude of things, and, you know, that's why we're here. We wanna hear from the development community, residents, how to correct this. Again, the information you give us, we'll, we'll be able to provide some recommendations for the council. I know, I too truly do believe a lot of things in regards to this needs to get changed or amended, but we need to hear from the public so that we can make those recommendations to city council and staff, so.
And with that, we will open it up, and anything you guys have that, you know, you think would be helpful to us, this is the time to. And with that, we will open it up, and anything you guys have that, you know, you think would be helpful to us, this is the time to share, by all means. Please of what you think is more fair, how we can preserve to make sure the city has water, but yet at the same time alleviate some of your concerns, so. With that, whoever wants to go first? And again, just think, state your name and just um, what you're representing or what your perspective is coming from would be really helpful, at least for us.
John Schlein with Before Development and Consulting here in Pasco. Um, I may get up and down here a couple of times, but the first question is regarding what we just heard about the surcharge. Um, I do agree with you, uh, councilman Peralis, um, the question I have for the description you gave. Is you said that there's a surcharge for other utilities, well, in this case. You're being charged for something you have sold or transferred the rights to within ten years, how do you sell? A sewer system or a power system? Um, explain how that correlates with what we're talking about with this surcharge, if you could.
And not necessarily direct correlation, but in terms of a, a surcharge and where the fifty percent came from. That was, that was the thought behind, uh, how do we move forward in terms of? It, it's, it's a surcharge to discourage transfer essentially, um, so as we are moving forward. Uh, into the future, uh, how do we encourage more transfer to the city? Because at the end of the day, it's not necessarily that we need to collect more money, we need to just have water rights to be able to serve the community.
Gotcha. So I still feel like it's punitive, um, as you were saying, and. The surcharge is probably the biggest thing that our clients um, talk about in this perspective too is. You know, we have large landowners that own also large quantities of water rights, and we represent. The two thousand one hundred and forty-seven um, offer that we have put on the table. And we actually have another landowner that just came to us, um, representing another at least three hundred. Um, and those are coming too light because they've set the market value so high. And so the city has said the market value now is forty-one fifty, uh, so they were paying seventeen fifty, now they're paying forty-one fifty, well, now we have landowners coming and saying. We'd like to go ahead and sell to the city, and it's taken the city, um. It sounds like almost six months before we'll be able to make that sale final. Um, if they're really desperate, like what we're being presented, we should get moving on this real quick. And let's sell some of these, and we do have landowners and water rights owners that want to sell. And so instead of charging a surcharge, let's allow this process to go on, I mean, we represent. Almost fifteen percent additional water rights than what they currently have, that we're willing to sell to them. And so I'd like for that to be a consideration in all of this too.
Okay, thank you, John, I invite anybody else? Don't be shy, yeah, come on up. And again, just your name and maybe perspective would be helpful for councilmember Peralis, and I thank you.
Alan Oberding, I'm a farmer north of town, so um, getting back to that gentleman's question. How much, I mean, if you want so many acre feet of water, what's the limit that you want? Twenty thousand acre feet or? I mean, like he says, he's got enough to supply you, okay, so. I, if I have some I want to sell, what's the cutoff amount?
It really depends on the growth patterns and also the money that we will have to be able to afford it.
Okay, so if, if he takes a hundred percent of the sale, which, you know, these are just examples. Can I go out and sell my water to somebody else without getting charged?
Can you say that again?
Okay, so the gentleman, he, he said, I believe he said that you had enough people that would.
We have about twenty-five hundred acres.
Yeah, so if twenty-five hundred is your number, and I've got, let's say, seven fifty to sell. And you don't want it, can I go sell it to somebody else without being charged for it?
Would you be developing?
Pardon me?
Would you be developing on the land?
Uh, would be development.
Yeah, and so with development, we would need water rights to be able to serve that development. And so very likely, as we're looking at different parts of the city as they are growing. It depends on whether those developments come with their own city rights, uh, or water rights or not. And so if you have water rights on that property and you're proposing to develop, we would. We, our preference would be that you transfer those water rights to us so that we can serve the, the housing. Or whatever you're developing within that property, uh, we would keep, uh. Let's say we purchase some other rights that we have additional to, then we would use that for properties in the city that might not have. Uh, water rights, that we would still need to have water rights to s- serve that development, so. We would be buying it, uh, essentially the developer would be paying for that, and um, and we would be buying the water rights there. Does that make it clear?
No.
So Al, if I can just clarify, I think what he's asking is if the city is satisfied with all the water rights we need, are you basically asking?
Exactly, yeah.
Would we sunset this um, fifty percent fee or do away with it, is I think kind of where he's going? If we have all the water we need, would, and I think that would really just be up to the legislative body at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, the, I mean, the number theoretically is a little over ten thousand acre feet, right, that we need for the twenty-three thousand units.
Um, for the next twenty years, correct?
Yeah, I, I think the water is out there somewhere, and that's what it seems like from the numbers, I mean. I pulled up, supposedly we have for about four thousand acre feet from potential leases, we can lease out water, you know, we have to pay that. Um, I believe there's twenty-five hundred back there that they're willing to sell, and then we kind of have that surplus that's kind of fluctuating, I mean, that comes out to almost like. Seven thousand acre feet, so I mean, I think there's water out there, I mean, that's why, but I think the thing I just, I really don't want to bring it up is like. Is like, um, this could be avoided, so if you had a development and then say, you could just transfer the water rights to the city and don't sell them. I mean, that would probably be the preferred, from the city standpoint, right? It's just be a direct transfer and.
Our preference is always for transfer of city ri- uh, water rights so that the city can um, serve that development for that property. That is the number one preference, in fact, um, it is harder to find water rights and to be able to buy water rights out there. Uh, and we don't want the uh, we don't know what will happen in the future, so it is better for us. And a preference of the city that the water rights get transferred as the property is getting developed.
Okay. Um, and then you're, when you talked about eleven units per acre, was that apartments? Or is that, that's not?
No, that is not apartments, that is dense development. Apartments are much higher density.
Okay.
They have less irrigation, but a lot more potable demand.
Okay, I guess I don't, I don't see eleven units per acre of houses on a, on a, on a development, but. That's not, that's not for me to say, um. So on the uh, process water that goes out there, is that, is that mixed with? Potable water before it's put on the ground, or is it a hundred percent process?
No, it's mixed with well water.
It is?
It is.
Well, I think that's it for now, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Oberding.
Hi guys, James Sexton, JMS Construction and Development, Pasco. Um, trying to clear up some of the things that these guys were saying is that. If I buy a per, a piece of property tomorrow and the farmer sold the water rights eight years ago. I have nothing in control of that, and now being the developer, you are going to give me a fifty percent surcharge on something that he did. Eight years ago, and I had no control of, right? That's where I think the fifty percent surcharge problem, now if I'm the developer and I buy the land and sell off the water rights. And go to the city going, yeah, I can give them cheaper from you, then I, I understand that, right? But there's a gap missing there, and then in your guys' math, you're also not calculating. The urban growth development, foot acres of water that are going to be developed, that have water rights. That will be given to the city, and I didn't see that calculation in there either, right? So there's, there's actual foot acres of water coming to the city as we're developing, right? Because that's the way developers work, right, and that calculation's not currently in there, so. The urban growth development you guys just did was a few acres, and uh, that came with water rights that can be transferred to the city. You guys just haven't approached those landowners yet.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Sexton.
Come on up. I know there's a wealth of information out there.
Councilman, uh, staff, Matt Hire, Association of Realtors, um. I've had a lot of discussions over the past few months with a lot of different stakeholders, citizens, people in Pasco about this. Um, fact-checked some of the findings with uh, folks up at Washington Realtors, and every single person came back and said. That Pasco consultant did a great job because forty-one fifty was within, I think, ten bucks of uh, some of the own, our own studies we did. Um. Uh, which stinks, because based off of your math on um, that, that previous slide. You're looking at, just kind of crunch numbers real quick, and I know, I'm not sure if staff has done this, but. It looks like for a quarter acre lot with a single family home, a five thousand dollar increase to the developer that will be passed on to the homeowner. Is that, have you done any kind of research just into like the basic home and that added cost, what it would look like?
The calculation was a lo- lower than five thousand, I'm trying to move back my slides, but they're not responding.
And, and, and that's the increase from the seventeen uh, that it was, I mean. Let's just call it five thousand, um, I might have been off by a few bucks, but five thousand, uh. When, when you're talking about that with council and the decision makers, and some of these individuals are not. Locked into the housing industry, right, and they're making kind of high level decisions, I think that, that, you know, what's the end user result, that should be kind of. Baked into the presentation, um, a- and then an asterisk underneath that that says. For every thousand dollars of home increase in Benton County, eighty-six families will be priced out of a home, so just let them know they're making that decision that four hundred people. Won't be able to buy any of these new quarter acre lot, single family homes that'll be built in, in Pasco. Unless you have obviously a plan for um, some affordable housing that's gonna go in along with it, but again, that should be kind of included. And at the same time is that, th- that's kind of where I'm going with this, I guess, is that. It wasn't the price that you guys came to, it was the process and the way that you arrived at it, because. It seemed fishy, um. When, when I am, am here talking to people in eastern Washington, it's. Handshakes and eye contact, and everybody's your neighbor, and this is just the friendly part of the state from my travels anyway, and. You know, the, the things you see in DC when there's a change of power, I mean, you, you pass it during a lame duck council. I think on current council, there might be two yes votes of the seven that actually got a vote on this ordinance, like, why not wait two months? I think that kind of sent up a lot of alarms to people, it seemed rushed, there wasn't a talk of um. The final cost of the house, there was no consideration or like a sister bill or a complimentary bill that addressed. I mean, if water is such an issue, why has it been so long since you've adjusted the rate? Why wasn't there a complimentary, complimentary policy in place that was going to address conservation? Or recycling, a lot of cities are looking at that in the state, it, it, it just seemed rushed and kind of forced through with a very limited. Uh, scope of information that was being released to the decision makers, um, and then I'll just jump on the bandwagon of the surcharge folks. Um, Leo brings up a great point, but I love your answer, that's really what it's about, is we need your water, we want your water transferred to us, otherwise there's a surcharge. At that point, going forward, the whole, go back ten years, why? And again, I would ask, has the work been done, do you know how much land? In city of Pasco that is currently under development or has been applied to be developed, would that affect? And do you have the um, list of individuals into these groups that will be getting that? Surcharge, I, that's what I'd like to see, because it does seem punitive, and I'm just, it kind of makes me scratch my head, like, wow, who, who's gonna get stuck with this bill? Um, so again. Maybe a slap on the hand for the process, I think it could have been better and a little more. Detailed um, with other considerations in place at the time it was going out there. But that's not for me to decide, um, but as a representative of people who are stakeholders in the community. I would at least like to see the ten years just kind of drop off, it just, I, I can't wrap my head around it, I, I understand the surcharge. And I appreciate the, the question and the conversations about it, but the, the ten years, it, it doesn't make sense. Uh, I would, I would almost worry about legal ramifications of people that had brokered these deals in the past and now have to pay this additional, and they'd say, hey, wait, wait. I thought I was grandfathered in or something, I mean, you, you, you're punishing people for beating the system nine years ago. God, I mean, good for them. I, I don't know, that's all I got, thanks, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Hire.
And to set the record straight, the increase in a quarter acre unit. Per unit is seventeen hundred, as it's showing on the screen.
All right, James Sexton, again, JMS Construction, Pasco, the seventeen hundred dollars that you're talking about in increases to me, the developer. When I take the other hat on and put me the builder, I just got hit with that, and I'm passing that on and adding inflation to it. Right, to me, the next person is getting hit with it too, it's a five thousand dollar increase, just so you guys understand that. We're, we're gonna get hit with that, I'm gonna add twenty-five percent to it, and I'm gonna pass it on to the builder, right? Because I can't eat it, right, and I gotta pay taxes on it, and it's revenue, so we're gonna turn around and add that. And then the next guy is gonna add it, and then, then it gets to the home, it's a five thousand dollar add to a house, just, just to be clear, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Harold Warsham. I think you guys are misinformed on. You know, the reuse water that's pumped versus uh, well water. Potatoes, there's a, a program called GAP, Good Agriculture Practices. You cannot pump the turd water on potatoes. But on the corn and alfalfa that I see every day, it's the nastiest water you've ever seen. There's not well water going in that, on the corn and alfalfa, that's turd water. Um, I think, tell me if I'm misinformed, but I think you're wrong.
Actually, there is uh, rinse water that is coming from the wells, and the wastewater that is being applied is. Wash water from processors, and it does not include any municipal uh, sewer, sewage water.
It's not sewage water, it's processed water, I call it turd water, because it stinks really bad. I think you're misinformed, I think you should look into it.
No, but that's a good point of clarification, because I honestly thought you were talking about feces too, and so, no, even for, for me up here, that's, I'm glad for.
I live there and it stinks really bad.
Okay, fair enough.
I think you're misinformed.
Thank you, Mr. Warsham.
I have an additional comment, I remember during the uh, council meeting or the workshop, um, I think we came up, or we did the math and. How much uh, that charge would be for a, I think sixteen hundred units, do you remember? Do you remember? Didn't we agree it was going to be like four point nine million dollars on that development? And that was just with the forty-one fifty fee? That's not like, that's not counting if, let's say all that was done on land that was, you know, with water rights sold.
I do not have that math with me today.
Okay. I want to, because I'm, I've, so for a quarter acre lot, it's a two point nine, um, five acre feet times forty-one fifty, we came out to that twelve thousand two hundred and forty-two dollars and fifty cents total fee. I think I took that number and divided it by four. And then, and then, and then I'm, from there, I think I did, we did four hundred times twelve thousand two hundred and forty-two.
We can get back to you.
Okay. Yeah, I must say, you know, I just really want to make sure that we understand that, I mean, millions of dollars would be probably passed down, you know, to a home, you know what I mean? So just, just things to think about, especially it would go up if it was fifty percent surcharge on that number. So I think that would be a good thing to just a, as a, just as a fact that, you know, this would add, you know, based on one of your examples, how much money that would add for that development, you know?
Anybody else? We really want to know. We are here to listen, here to learn, here for your input.
Hello.
Good evening.
My name is Fred Oberding. I'm Alan Oberding's brother. We both farm north of Pasco and we've had for a long time a water agreement with Lamb Weston Processing Plant. So we take their wastewater. And in lieu of the wastewater, we get a guaranteed amount of acres contracted. And I can tell you one thing that they don't do is they do not put wastewater on a potato crop. And I can tell you other things about the wastewater. You can't put it on a, a new seeded crop like Timothy, Sweet Corn or Alfalfa. It will kill it. And to put wastewater on a crop, you have to sup- supplement it with about eighty, eighty-five percent fresh water. So I know that the City of Pasco or the Port of Pasco has the rangers with farmers east of Highway three ninety-five. And the stench out there is horrible. And so if we're all going to live in this community, you're going to have to do something about that, whether it's a digester or whatever you're going to do. But I think it's, when you take it down to the math, excuse me. I'm sorry. When you take it down to the math, it's going to require more water than you're calculating. And I was, I came as a listener, but then things that I didn't agree with, that's why I'm up here and there is. Oh, I know, the other point was, while we're still under debate of how much water is going to take. Uh, I was going to ask you if you would consider leasing water for a five or ten year lease until you get this thing straightened out, because I think you're a long way from being straightened out. Anyway, that's my comment.
Okay. Really appreciate it, Mr. Oberding. Thank you.
Thank you.
And to his comment a little bit, that's one of the things that I know in a meeting, I've sat down and asked a lot of these same questions with staff as far as, can we, you know, lease for a period with like a lease-to-own contract? That way, you know, maybe the water rights owner, you know, get, get some extra money out of it rather than that. And so, you know, you guys, in all reality, we, we're looking, all options are on the table. We want to consider all these things. That's why we're here before you, so please keep it coming.
Hello. I'm Jennifer Montz, Windermere Group One. Oh, Realtor with Windermere Group One. So, agree with everything that's been said. My concern is the bottom dollar. We're in affordable housing crisis, which we all know. And I decided to speak because looking at these numbers, it is super concerning to me that staff truly thinks that the bottom dollar to the end user is the seventeen ninety-four fifty. And we have a developer sitting right here saying that's absolutely not the case. And so again, when we go to the timeline of these meetings, and let me just pull it up here. So council workshop ten-ten, developer meeting ten-twenty-three, council meeting eleven-twenty-two, which is when I believe this was voted in. That is ridiculously fast. And for us to sit here tonight and say, this is one number, it's X two, and then three times that to our end user, there were not nearly enough conversations before this was passed. So just really want to stress the importance of making sure that the public is aware, that the stakeholders are aware, and taking our time to make these decisions, because it has a serious impact on our community. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Mrs. Montz. And please be assured, that's why we're here tonight.
Dave Rutter. Most of the work that we've been doing helping developers has been in Kennewick, not in Pasco. But just from what I'm seeing and hearing and listening to the, the people talk, in Kennewick, we never had to deal with going out and, and converting farm ground into residential. There was always enough ground to, to develop. Kennewick's probably about eight years away from not having any more ground to develop. I hope that you guys listen to the farmers, the guys that know what they're talking about, because this, me sitting here for the first time, this really concerns me with what I'm hearing. Those guys are the, are the pros. And I, I hope that we take our time and take a few more minutes, just like Jennifer said, that's pretty quick moving on stuff for a municipality. And I hope that you really do sit down and workshop with the, with the farmers here that know what they're talking about. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, sir. Yep.
Charles, us farmers, we'd really like to sit down and talk to you guys.
Thank you. Appreciate it. As Mr. Peralos just mentioned, this is pretty much our agenda. We don't have a lot of feedback. We're, we're new to the council. This was, you know, voted on back in November. We are just trying, trying to learn and to understand and to listen. And so we're, we're not going to have a lot of feedback tonight. We're going to take this and visit with the rest of the council and staff and discuss with them, but just really want to make sure everybody has an opportunity to speak up.
So what are the council's plans going forward? Did they ever put together a, a committee or?
So we are the subcommittee. Both, both Mr. Peralos and I volunteered for, to, to come listen, to try to really just come up with, I guess, just put together what we're hearing from everybody and bring it back to the council. I can tell you, there's no formal plans. This is kind of step one, stage one of just coming and listening, trying to, you know, hear from the stakeholders, you know, where they think we got it wrong, where, you know, how we can get it right and so that we can take that back to the, to the larger body. Because to do anything as the legislative body, it takes four of us and we're just two, so.
Yeah. Well, I was under the understanding after that last meeting that they were going to form a committee to go through this stuff of, of Realtors, of all the stakeholders, and then report to the, to the whole council.
Correct.
Yeah. No, I think that's still the general idea. I don't, we don't really talk about selection process or anything, but today we're supposed to just be a meeting, where, subcommittee meeting, where we would talk, you know, we'd see the presentation, talk about water rights again and get feedback. But it was my intention, I think when I kind of brought it up, was to create a committee with stakeholders, farmers, what have you, Realtors, people who are affected by this, to come together and, and come together and find some recommendations and really just set the tone of going forward, like we need to slow down some of this stuff. I've been very transparent with my perspective and the way I approach things and, and that's a lot of people in the council too. I'm not going to speak for everyone, but, you know, we do feel like this was rushed. I, we meant, I mean, at least I mentioned it when I was still running for city council. I just feel like this needing to be really fleshed out. We need to talk with farmers, anyone who's going to be affected by it and really understand how this is going to impact, because like Ms. Montz talked about, we are in affordable housing crisis and I feel like little things like this, well, these are big things, are impacting that. And it's going to affect us from reaching that goal of, you know, twenty-seven thousand units. We're not going to re- reach that goal if we're going to put all this, all these barriers and hurdles in front of developers and stuff like that. So that's what this is about. I, I'm going to say this was probably the first of many meetings I, we really need to make sure that this is, that we're going to craft good policy that's not going to impact our goals. If it's not, then we're, that this housing crisis is going to get out of control.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's the reason I asked the question, so we know what to expect down the road and I'm not up here looking for, I'm not raising my hand.
No, that's good. And, you know, I can tell you guys, yes, to echo Councilmember Peralos, we are not through tonight. At the same point, I can tell you what I'm really hoping to hear though, is answers from the public too. You know, give us some ideas, because one of the questions that I asked was, you know, if we're trying to ensure the water has enough, or the city has enough water and the fifty percent surcharge is unfair or inequitable, or however we want to word that, then what else, what are our other options? How can we make sure the city has enough? If we throw that out and that's definitely a consideration, what can we do to ensure the city has for future growth, has water for future growth? And so that's where I'm hoping, even from some ideas from stakeholders and others, how do we ensure that? And I'm not saying it is a challenge, please don't. I'm literally looking for information coming together, so. Does anybody have any? Matt, welcome back up.
I, I just kind of want to piggyback on that. This should not have ever been a standalone issue for kind of a quick fix. It, it really would work with other policy of recycling or, you know, zero escaping. I've heard you mention that a lot, Councilman Peralos, to where it's encouraged or incentivized or something. And even to Jacob's credit, he got the design standards pushed through last year in Pasco and maybe there's something in there where he could, even with the increase, that seems to be kind of a market rate, instead of people getting priced out, maybe he finds a way to kind of encourage a zero-scape duplex type of a community where you can still get people into homes, where they can build equity and kind of have that little taste of the American dream. But I, I, there is, there's really a, a lot of answers and a lot of possibilities and that, so we, I just kind of go back to the feeling that it seemed rushed and there wasn't enough other consideration of how things might kind of interact with this change on its own.
Awesome. Thank you. Deputy City Manager, Sigdell, do you have anything else?
None, no questions or comments at this point, Councilmember.
Perfect. Mr. Oberding, welcome back up. Yes, sir. We're, we're here to listen. Yeah, no, this is good.
And I lo- I love to talk, so. Anyway, I just, as I sat back down, I remembered this thing I forgot is that Harold had referred to it as turd water. And actually, my brother was the one that coined that name. Because before the City of Pasco purchased ground out east of three ninety-five, Lamb Weston was already doing, taking wastewater from their plant and putting it out on ground. And in time, the nitrate levels in that ground got too high. Phosphates went out of the ceiling along with phosphates. And they were forced to add additional ground to their water spreading agreements. And at that time, my brother and I, we were farming together and we signed a contract for, on irritable acres, about nine hundred acres, along with Tomlinson Farms. And that got them enough acres so they were able to spread the product and keep the environmental impacts low enough that the ecology department accepted those numbers. And they also got the, the odor out of the air, because they were not applying day after day to the same pieces of ground, so. But I, I do notice that, because Lamb at the time would, would mix some fresh water along with the processed water and we weren't getting near the smell. But I noticed that east of three ninety-five, the smell tells me that the city's not mixing any fresh water with that turd water and it smells like hell. And anyway, I'm just, this is information only, I'm passing along to you, so when we, when we get an opportunity to sit down, that we don't have to re-explain things or tell you something you didn't know from the start. And so that's why I got back up here.
No, thank you again, Mr. Oberding. And that is one of the notes that I made here is I wrote stench in ponds in East Pasco. So yes, we are here and we're, we're, we are listening and we really want to take everything you guys are telling us. And Councilmember Peralos and I will visit about, we'll talk with Mayor Serrano about it and with staff about it, of course, and then, you know, come up with, you know, what, what would be a viable next step for us, you know, visiting more with stakeholders. And again, if you guys have answers, if you have further comment that maybe you're a little gun shy in front of this crew here tonight or whatever, email either of us, email staff, please. You know, we, we really want to know. We really want to learn and hear that feedback, so.
Well, I can, I can guarantee you, the Pasco, Washington area is the best place to farm in the nation, because unlike California, we don't have droughts. And unlike the South, we don't have hurricanes. And unlike the North, we don't have freezing weather. We have a two hundred plus degree growing days. And that's why you're seeing processors wanting to come in here and secure part of their food supply. And that's, I don't see that stopping. So cities, municipalities and farmers, we have a lot of challenges ahead of us, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Yeah, we are intrinsically connected with the farm community here and, no, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. So have you given any consideration to, as it was discussed back in November, that you pretty much had to pass this, because you couldn't do an ordinance to repeal it at that time? Have you given any consideration to just simply write a new ordinance to repeal this and then go back to the drawing table and start again? Because it does seem to me that there Um, cause it does seem to me that there are some things that between farmers and realtors and developers really do need to be discussed. And I think that would be a great thing for you guys to consider and I think you may even have enough votes on the council to possibly push that through. Yes, thank you, John.
Go ahead, you were going to say. I mean, I, I think that was kind of my intention, uh, when I brought up about repealing it, but you have to have an ordinance to repeal the ordinance. Um, what I was told, or you gotta have an ordinance in place that's, you know, equal, um, to remove it. Um, so, I mean, I'm, I'm all ears for something like that. Um, again, I felt like we could have, uh, done better in regards to get an outreach prior to crafting policy. And that was one of my recommendations is that when we have something of this magnitude or really kind of any ordinance change, that we do our due diligence, meet with stakeholders before, rather than being kind of reactive after we pass it. Then we have to start looking into it. Um, that's, again, that's, I'm just, I'm just speaking for myself on the council, but that was one of my recommendations. So I think that's still on the table. I think the, this subcommittee was to, um, hear questions and, and get comments from the, you know, community about this. Um, but I would say that's still on the table and I'd be willing to bring it to the council. Um, but then, you know, we have to have the support in order to, you know, put it on the agenda and have the staff craft that ordinance that we can repeal the current ordinance and start from scratch, essentially. That would be the process unless I'm mistaken.
Uh, you would be accurate. Um, we would, we would discuss this in the regular council and whatever direction you have for staff. Staff would then go out, um, and follow that direction. And if that direction is to create, uh, an ordinance to repeal the past, past ordinance, then, uh, we would go ahead and do so.
All right, well, thank you. And I guess that's where I'll leave it is we are not through here. Whether it does go that direction or, you know, immediately or sooner than later, or we just continue learning and hearing from you guys and putting together a meaningful committee where we can craft something that does ensure water for the city for future development. By all means, that's why we're here. So anyways, thank you, everybody for being here tonight. It is seven fourteen and we will adjourn this listening session. Thank you.